Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everyone. First up, we have the roll call for this evening. Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite.
Mellie Garthwaite, Council at Large, present.
Councilman Brian Lox.
Brian Lox, Council at Large, present.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan, First District, present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ruby Melton.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton, Second District, present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Thank you. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Fourth District, present.
Thank you. Councilman Edward McMillan.
Good evening, Edward McMillan, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan, Sixth District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker, Seventh District, present.
Councilman Christopher Vargo.
Councilman Christopher Vargo, Eighth District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Mueller.
Councilwoman Katie Mueller, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Steve Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And myself, Nicholas Pascal, Acting as Chair. We have a quorum, full house today, all right? Sorry, Stacy normally does that, I'm not a pro. She'll be a little late. First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing of the Finance Committee on the Program Year 51 Neighborhood Assistance Program Budget. It's just for that. Handing it over to Councilman... Donovan?
It's me.
Akbarali.
Akbarali, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 6:57, and your public hearing on finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali as Chair. Finance Committee Communication C from the June 9, 2025 Agenda, from the Community Development Administration, regarding approval of the Program Year 51 Neighborhood Assistance Program Budget, West Haven Child Development Center, Inc., $15,000, Ward Heitman House Foundation, Inc., $24,500, and the West Haven Community House, $20,000. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments regarding this communication? For a second time, does anyone from the public have any comments regarding this communication? And for a third and final time, does anyone from the public have any comments regarding this communication? Thank you. The time is now 6:58, Chairman, and public hearing on finance is now closed.
Thank you very much. The next public hearing we have is on amending of Chapter 178 Code for the City, and that is Councilman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is 6:59, and Committee on Legislative Matters is now in session. We are now entering a public hearing on Communication C from the April 28, 2025 Agenda, from Mayor Dorinda Borr, regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 178 of the Code of the City of West Haven, posting of bills. Will anybody from the public like to speak on this matter? For a second time, would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? For a third and final time, would anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at 6:59, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Just give me one second, make sure this is... I want to make sure we're streaming, I'm sorry. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vargo. We will now enter into public session. I just want to, for the new folks in the audience, this isn't a back and forth. We can hear your concerns, obviously, but we do not engage, and there is a five-minute speaking rule, which we are usually are pretty liberal on, so would anyone like to speak before the City Council? Ms. Calligary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Joanne Calligary, Republican Registrar of Voters, 355 Main Street. I came before you previously to explain that an Assistant Registrar has no... No? Oh, goodness. Should I start over? Okay, I came before you previously to explain that an Assistant Registrar has no authority whatsoever to sign any documents in our office. Only the Registrar of Voters are authorized. I know that this council was not aware that Assistant Registars are only appointed to serve at the polls, not in our office, and that Assistant Registars assist the moderator in each poll on election or primary days. Veronica Rivas, my administrative assistant, has been a dedicated employee for over 10 years, and even translates for all departments for free. It would be immoral to end her employment by changing her title. I know this honorable council did not know the ramifications that would entail by changing the title, thereby Veronica losing her job. Therefore, I am requesting this council to correct this oversight and restore the title of Administrative Assistant, and allow our office to continue the City of West Haven to serve in a professional manner. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council? Sir?
Yeah, hi. My name's Darren Sutfin. I'm just...
Sorry, I just need your addresses.
27 Oleander Street.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of my road. It is really in poor condition. I've fallen a few times. I got pictures. I've been diagnosed with neuropathy, therefore my balance is off. I have pictures of my road. I hear that there's no money in the budget for the road paving. I have pictures I'd like to pass around to show you how this road is. There's two pictures. I don't know who wants to see it. One side of the road is paved. I guess the water company or the gas company had put lines in, so that's perfectly paved. But it's really in front of my house, and the house next to me, it's between West Prospect and Highland Street that's not paved, and it's treacherous. I mean, they're not potholes, they're swimming pools. Oh. Oh, I thought that was it. And there's a picture of my face where I fell, and... I mean, it's really dangerous. See, I'm out a lot at night on a cane, and... And right now, there's a big branch. It was the windstorm on Wednesday. I was going to the VA, and we were trying to go down Collin Street, and I didn't know who to call to report it to, but it's a huge branch that fell down. And on Collin Street, there was a truck out there picking up branches. You know, it's not a branch, it's a limb. They were picking up, and they didn't come down our street to pick up the limb. It's in front of my house. It's huge. It broke off from the windstorm. That was Wednesday night, Thursday night.
Thank you. We'll definitely get these concerns to Public Works.
All right, thank you.
Try to get your phone back to you. Anyone else like to... Ms. Weinstein?
Good evening. Paige Weinstein, 20 Platte Avenue. I'm here tonight as a member, an honored member, of the Community Development Citizen Advisory Committee. And, boy, this gentleman, thank you for your service, but I believe that that street is also one of the streets that is in our plans ultimately to be taken care of. So I know that that is going to come forward in a 30-day period to be reviewed. So I just would like to put that out there. The other part that I'd like to just share is, when we get the applications for the block grant, it is probably one of the hardest jobs that we have to do to determine where that money goes. We don't have a lot of money. We get requests three times what we have to distribute. The office does an amazing job of, and when I say the office, it's not the office, it's Rosa and it's Ron, do an absolutely amazing job in determining whether there's other areas that a request might be able to go, so that we now can even limit, and when I say limit, there is no limit, because we're looking at spending $90,000 when we're of a request for over $300,000. So we determine where the needs are greatest. Where is there... Where can we potentially just stick a finger in a hole? Because there's not enough to fix everything. So tonight, when our budget comes before you, please know that we did this with West Haven, the residents of West Haven's best interest, and in where we thought we could make the biggest impact, and when Rosa is up here as well. If you have a question for me, as being on the advisory committee, I would be happy to answer that.
Sir?
I'm sorry, I...
I'm sorry, yeah. She just addresses us. You can't... You can get with her privately, though. Yeah, yeah. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council for a second time? Would anyone like to speak? Ms. Lepper?
Thank you. My name is Sherri Lepper. I'm the Democratic Registrar of Voters for West Haven, 355 Main Street. I want to take this opportunity to address a recent accusation that I acted maliciously or went behind anyone's back to change a title in our office. I want to make it clear that is simply not true. I did not change anyone's title, nor do I have the authority to alter job classifications outside of legal requirements. What I did do as is within my rights and responsibility as a registrar is appoint someone to serve as my assistant. That appointment must by law go to the resident of the municipality, which is called Title IX. Whether you call the role Assistant Registrar or Administrative Assistant, the fact remains that performing duties on the registrar's statutory authority the state residency requires applies. This is not about the budget book titles. This is about statute, state statute, and the law doesn't change depending on what someone is labeled in a spreadsheet. We're guided by the Connecticut General Statute, not by opinions or assumptions. There is no personal agenda, there is no political motivation, and certainly no malicious intent. I am simply fulfilling my legal obligations to ensure that every appointment in my office complies with the rules that govern us. Veronica has every right to apply for any position within the city. She's an appointed role. It's not a union or civil service with guaranteed status or protection. These type of positions are subject to change with new leadership, and that's a well-established part of the process. Unfortunately, appointees do not get reappointed when new leadership takes over, and in many cases, they are let go. She was fortunate to continue her employment under my administration, under a different party affiliation as a Republican. This is not about politics or personal issues. It's about following the law, maintaining professional standards, ensuring that all appointees serve the best interests of the registrar's office and the voters we represent. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Wouldn't anyone else like to speak before the City Council?
Can I bring my question up to the City Council?
It's a one-time speaking rule, unfortunately, so... But we can get with you afterwards if you'd like, or...
I'm going to be able to answer your question when it's my turn to speak. I know your question.
Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Hi. To the council, good evening. To the mayor, good evening. My name is Lorraine Jensen. I live at 68 Lead Street in West Haven. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. Anyways, I'm here to talk and reference... Oh, sure, my phone has to ring now. What happens is I'm here to talk in favor of Veronica Rivas, okay, and the administrative job, because an administrator is something totally different than an Assistant Registrar. Totally two different things. An Assistant Registrar gets appointed for one day. She works at, he or she actually works for the polls for one day. Gets, they get sworn in, and at the end of the day, when everything is all said and done, that person gets to go home, and the next day, they get to go work in their regular job or whatever that they do the next day. An Administrative Assistant is a clerk. What they do is they come to the office, and they are, they work with the registrar. And they are, the registrar distributes and distinguishes which jobs they need to have done. And that's exactly what an administrative does. She is not anything, she's not appointed, she's not elected, but she's a clerk. And yes, she's, she may not live in the City of West Haven, but I don't see where that would be a requirement if you were just a clerk, because we do have, probably if you looked in this, maybe in City Hall, and you see other clerks out here, they might not also be living in the City of West Haven. So I don't see where that would even count. Let's see, there's something else I wanted to say. Yes, she has been here for 10 years, and she's doing a very good job. She gets along with everybody. She does, again, she's bilingual. So again, and also, the reason why it is not in, it's not in any of the statutes because she is a clerk. Administrative assistants will not show up in the statutes because she's a clerk. That's basically the reason why, if you think about it. And Mr. Vargo had made a comment as to how they, he said that you have, in the statute, you have the power to change someone's title. I wish you had named the statue because nowhere can we find it in the state or the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council? For a second time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? The third and final time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? Public session is now closed at 7:12. We will now convene the 7:23-25 regularly scheduled council meeting at, we'll call it 7:13. A little housekeeping first. I miss Stacy. I'll entertain a motion to replace the name Coletti with Melton as Chairman of the Personnel and Civil Service Committee on tonight's agenda.
Motion, second.
And second was... Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I am looking for a motion to approve the Journal of June 9, 2025. So moved. So moved, Vargo. And do I have a second? Second, Lox. All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Two abstention. That would be Akbarali and Mueller. Okay. Normally, we would have the council clerk read the communications, hand out the communications for the evening. I will do that. Once again, I miss Stacy. Communication A from the tax collector regarding overpayment of refunds will be read into the record later in the agenda. Communication B, from Deputy Chief Carl Fleming regarding animal shelter donations, will go to Finance, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication C from Michael Gormaney, Finance Director, and Rachel A. Mossi, Tax Manager, regarding the approval of the sale and assignment of delinquent tax liens to Tower Capital Management, also Finance, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication D from the Community Development Administration regarding approval of the block grant program year 51 budget, also to Finance, Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication E from Dave Taylor, Assistant Finance Director, regarding the transfer of funds of 2.2 million from the Medical Internal Service Fund 603 to the Workers' Compensation Fund, Internal Service Fund 602, and the transfer of $346,029 from account 19009990-56010, unallocated contingency to account 14000010-52680, Town Aid Road, also going to Finance, Akbarali. Chairwoman Akbarali. Communication F from Mayor Dorinda Borr regarding the appointment of Paula Capuccia RN, 787 First Avenue, West Haven, Connecticut, to the West Haven Senior Commission. Ms. Capuccia's appointment will be for a term of five years, effective immediately, and will expire on June 30 of 2030, going to Personnel and Civil Service, Chairwoman Melton. Communication G from Mayor Dorinda Borr regarding a request for approval for the sale of the following two properties to the West Haven Housing Authority, DBA Savon Rock Communities, Inc., for $50,000. A .25 acre property located at 1185 Campbell Avenue with a city map slash lot designation of map 60 and lot 124, and a .18 acre property located at 1184 Campbell Avenue with a city map lot designation of map 60 and lot 122 with an open space deed restriction, going to Public Lands, Chairman Donovan. Does Stacy read all this? Communication H from Michael Agello, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding an offer to transfer title to the real property located at 164 Roosevelt Avenue from Donna Marie Chapini and Marino Lamoro to the City of West Haven, Public Lands, Chairman Donovan. And those are the communications for this evening. Me, Mr. Chairman, as she normally says.
You do that again, I wasn't listening.
No. All right. We will now recess into committee meetings at 7:17. First up, Finance Committee, Chairwoman Akbarali.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 7:17, and your Committee on Finance is now in session. Committee members are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali as Chair. First up, we have our finance updates from Michael Gormaney, our Finance Director.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Does anybody need a hard copy? I do have hard copies. I'll just pass them around. These were also emailed to the, this is the same packet that was emailed on Friday for everyone to review as well. The first finance update is how the city is doing from a fiscal standpoint for fiscal year 2024-2025. Right now, we're looking, based on the numbers in May, about, it was, it's looking in our general fund about a $2 million surplus. Our Allentown Fire Department is looking at about $466,000, and our sewer fund is actually in the positive around $232,000. So we're looking pretty well for this fiscal year. Again, we're closing out. So as I tell you every meeting, this number is also subject to change. There are still expenditures that we have to make during the fiscal year. And remember, just because we end on June 30, doesn't mean we close everything on June 30. There are still things that come in July and August. We usually end up finalizing our books around September, so that's when we really have final numbers. But again, this is how we were looking in May. On the revenue side, we were looking at tax collections being, you know, projected very close to where we were last fiscal year, which is a good thing. We're seeing strong tax collection rates on real estate and personal property, and motor vehicles about the same as last fiscal year as well. On the expenditure side, so what you'll notice is on the expenditure side, again, when we say surplus or under budget, you know, we've had vacancies in a couple of other, in a couple of different departments this fiscal year that has really contributed to savings. Not that we're not trying to hire. The mayor has made a lot of hires during this year. But again, we had vacancies as well that we were trying to fill. So again, we didn't fill every vacancy this year, or it fluctuated during the year. We also have some people retire or resign or things like that, so that really contributed to those vacancy savings. Now, also, some of those vacancy savings, we did see some overage and overtime in some departments as well. Again, also, depending on the department that you're looking at, and I can just give the example of, you know, one of the departments, I oversee the Assessor's Office, we had a larger variance in overtime, but that was also covered by some vacancies because we were dealing with statutory deadlines, rebau. We had staffing shortages, things like that, that all contributed to that overtime overage. So I can say that a lot of our departments actually had similar things when it came to their overtime. So, but again, we did have vacancies to, vacancy savings to cover that. We came in right on debt service, based on our borrowing. And one of the other areas is we did save slightly on our insurance premiums for this year as well. So there were, there were a lot of different areas that are contributing to to the surplus on the revenue and expense side. But again, this number is subject to change. We are not done closing out. And again, as I mentioned, this is as of the end of May. So there are still changes to be made. We don't anticipate this number going, changing a whole lot. But again, there may be some fluctuation between when we change now and, you know, as we bring in the remaining expenditures for the year and revenue. So that is my finance update.
Thank you, Mr. Gormaney. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Hi, Mike, how are you? Just a couple of quick questions. Do you know when the 1103 negotiations slated to wrap up?
So we're currently in active negotiations now. Obviously, there's not too much to say in public because those are union negotiations, but we've been actively negotiating with 1103. Depending on when we wrap up or come to some term, some sort of agreement, again, that's something that would affect these numbers. We're projecting them in contingency right now, but it's also about the timing.
Okay. And just two questions on the Allentown Fire Department. You said that they are experiencing some higher-than-anticipated equipment repairs. Are those the transfers that we made earlier this year, or are these in addition to what we did?
Those may be in addition to what we did because, again, everything here is forecasted, and I think we've seen a couple of expenditures that came in for the Allentown Fire Department. But again, they were running, they're running a surplus, so luckily, it didn't throw them in a deficit or anything like that.
And do you have any sense from the chief of where, if they do realize a surplus in FY '25, where that might go?
That's part of our ongoing discussions. So when we're closing out the year, again, we do that, you know, July and August, we make sure we pull everything in, and normally, towards the end of July, beginning of August, we start to have those conversations on, you know, the last few years, it's went to pay down the pension liability in the fire department, so that's really where that conversation is going to happen.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the committee? Councilman Johnstone?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Mike, just a small note here, and I know it's early in the season. I'm looking at the parking meter revenue for our beaches. Are we still charging, and maybe the mayor can kick in too on this, are we still...
Are we still charging, and maybe the mayor can kick in too on this, are we still charging the five dollars an hour, or do we adjust those for this year?
I left him here.
We're actually addressing, we're adjusting those for Dawson Avenue and, um, Sebluff. Yep, because they're the most popular, and we see the most revenue, but we're actually had that changed today, where we're changing it for out-of-towners to a higher rate.
Gotcha.
Because we do like their revenue, and they are parking there, but now our residents, you know, have challenges parking in those lots. So if our out-of-towners are willing to pay, we are going to charge a little more.
That's all I have, Mike, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chairwoman.
You're welcome. I'll open it up to the councils. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Mayor Borr?
Thanks. Um, I'm gonna spin, I'm gonna spin the paving conversation into finance because, you know, paving costs money, so I can, I can try to spin it and answer those questions while we're on this rather than waiting till new business. So yes, Oleander is on the list. What Paige Weinstein was referring to is that, let me back up for a second. We have about three hundred and fifty streets in the city. It costs two million dollars for every ten streets we pave. So that gives you an idea of we could get maybe twenty streets maybe paved per year. So we got a lot of catching up to do, we got a lot of bad streets, but we don't have a lot of money to, to address it, but we're doing the best we can. So what we did was, we went to Community Development Department. Uh, Ron is here as well, and thank you, Ron, for the work that you do. And there was funding available for this particular neighborhood. So we're going to, um, address, hopefully when everything gets voted for, West Prospect, West Clerk, Clark, Oleander, Hillcrest, um, there's a, there's a group Highland, there's a group of streets that are within that area that the community development's funding is gonna kick in to help subsidize and supplement the funding for us to get neighborhoods done. How's that for a spin?
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Unfortunately, no. You can get together. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gorman, I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Communication B from Deputy Chief Carl Fleming regarding animal shelter donations. I'd like to open this up for discussion.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions regarding this? I'll open it up to the whole council. Anyone on the council have any questions? All right, all those approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Communication C from Michael Gorman, Finance Director, and Rachel Amassey, Tax Manager, regarding the approval of the sale and assignment of delinquent, delinquent tax liens to Tower Capital Management. I would like to open this up for discussion.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gorman, did you just wanna go over this really quick?
Sure. So this is the sale of delinquent tax liens. The city does this every year. These are accounts that we sell to various companies, um, or a company. We solicit in a RFP and we get back proposals. And the tax manager, Rachel, really does a good job in, um, looking at the proposals and seeing, you know, what the vendor is including, what they're not included in their collection practices, things like that. But this is a practice that we, that the city has done for a number of years. We build it into our budget. And looking at this, um, and looking at the RFPs, we received three proposals from three different companies, and, um, we decided to award this to Tower Capital Management, so, um, that's what I have.
Great. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Gorman? Anyone on the council? Councilwoman Tucker? Yeah.
Make a statement. This is done, um, I learned according to state statute, is that correct?
Yeah, when we sell, so there are different ways that different municipalities do, um, delinquent collections. West Haven elects to do it by selling the lien, but yes, we have to follow Connecticut General Statute twelve dash one fifty-seven, I believe is the statute. Ninety-five, thank you. I just seen it in the law. Twelve dash one ninety-five, um, to, in order to sell liens. So there is a process that we have to go through, which includes advertising and opening up in other areas that the tax manager reviews.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Happenin. You're welcome. Um, have you, have you used this company before?
Yes, um, the tax manager was happy, um, you know, they worked with the tax office, they worked with residents of West Haven as well, um, in the past as well when it comes to the delinquency and taxes. So, um, she was happy with this vendor, and by choice also, they were also the vendor with the highest markup of what they would pay the city to get these liens as well.
Councilman Vargo?
Mike, these are for the two thousand and twenty-three liens?
Yes.
And just for the record, they're paying over one hundred and seven percent of the principal value of those lien portfolio, right?
Correct. We, um, we advertise a lien list, but that lien list changes because, you know, some people come in to pay, some people are added on, so this was, um, the date in the letter, I believe, was June, but the, the markup is based on the lien list that we advertised in, uh, end of May, in June, when we did the posting.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing there are no more, all those approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gorman, I appreciate it. All right, next up is Communication D from the Community Development Administration regarding approval of the block grant program year five-one budget. We have Rosie here tonight from the CDA Department.
Point of order, ma'am, Chair.
Oh, yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to bring this out for discussion since we need a public hearing.
Absolutely. May I have a motion for discussion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll say.
Hi, John Carano. How's everybody tonight? This is Rosa Richardson, CDA. I just wanna give you a little background about the process, because I know this process is cumbersome, and then we can get all into the details of the numbers, whatever you wanna talk about. With us tonight is Rosa and Ron Dumas, and Mike Gorman is part of, part of our team, as is the entire Citizen Advisory Committee with Mrs. Weinstein is on. In November, applications for the next program year are mailed out. Around Christmas time, applications are due back. The first week of January, there's a public hearing on the annual action plan where we get committees' input onto what we should be spending money on. Uh, the second week of January, uh, the, uh, we start with application reviews. It's a process that takes about six weeks with, with the Citizen Advisory Committee. In March, the Citizen Advisory Committee develops the budget. They have a meeting and try to make the dirty decisions that Ms. Weinstein was talking about, right? We have three times the amount of funding requests. Who's gonna get what? How are we gonna recommend the budget? Uh, the mayor then reviews. In May, there's a public notice in the New Haven Register that includes the entire proposed budget. Modifications are then made, uh, I'm, excuse me. This year, around the twentieth of May, we, we received notice about the program funding, how much the federal government was gonna give us. Modifications were then made based on the decrease in funding we received. And here we are in June where the city council reviews, public hearing, and hopefully approval. Uh, in July first, the new program year begins, uh, and in August, the mayor signs off on the HUD-funded requirements, which include certifications. Couple of things, um, the Citizen Advisory Committee is not allowed just to move money wherever they want. There's limitations on a lot of things. Only fifteen percent can be spent on public service. So wheat, um, bridges, head start, uh, items for individuals with disabilities is capped at fifteen percent of what we receive from the federal government. Sixty-five percent can be spent on infrastructure and public, uh, public facilities. Things like down payment assistance, handicap ramps, stair lifts, uh, single and multifamily rehabilitation on houses, as well as infrastructure repair of roadways in low, moderate-income areas. I think we heard a little bit about that tonight. Twenty percent is spent on, is the max cap you can spend on administrative. In, in the new budget coming up, as you know, we did not fill the director position. Uh, the mayor recommended and the council approved, not filling the director position. That helped with the limited funding, keep us under that twenty percent, and it was a, you know, it's a good move, we're there, so. What else do I have? One last thing, uh, this year's funding was difficult to forecast, as anybody's been watching the news, and no one really knew what the federal government was gonna do with CBDG funds. It could've went to zero, it could've went up, it most likely was gonna go down, we just weren't sure how much. This program year, we, uh, last program year, we received six hundred and sixty-two thousand. This program year was a seven percent decrease to six hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, which is forty-six thousand and change less. The reduction was small compared to what it may or could have or estimated to be. So, um, with the help of the Citizen Advisory Committee, uh, and Rosa and Ron, the recommendations in front of you are what was put together, so. Rosa is here to answer anything we need.
Anyone on the committee have any questions for Rosa? Anyone on the council? Mayor Borr?
Uh, no comments on the actual programs. I just wanna, um, take the opportunity to thank the department, and I wanna thank John Carano because when he was originally hired, he wasn't hired to help lead this department, Community Development. And Mark Basakia had retired, and the position was vacant, and because of what, you know, the tenuous situation with the federal government and the funding, I could not in good conscience hire another director that we may have to let go, and that was a hundred and ten thousand dollar position, so we also saved by not filling that position. Then John came on board, and I was like, you know, you lead health and elderly and youth, and they're all community departments, you know, do you mind taking this department on without any extra, uh, pay? And he very willingly did, and Rosa and Ron do a great job. So this, this department is really like, you know, they're, they're really hitting the mark and doing a lot of good things in our community, and I think they're gonna be talking in the near future about a lot of other great things that they're doing in the community, so. I thank them, and I thank our advisory board.
Thank you, Mayor Borr. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. I love to see, um, attention, you know, being paid to, you know, those areas that hardly ever get the attention. So it was really nice to see that and to see the funding, you know, that's going along with it and the support that's being given, so thank you all, and, you know, all the attention that's being paid is not lost. I really appreciate seeing that.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you both, I really appreciate it. All right, Chairman, I would like to set.
I, I'm sorry to be late, I just have a quick question for Rosa and you. I just wanted to ask, uh, where says West Haven Board of Education regarding flooring, we're giving them twenty-five thousand dollars for flooring in the school?
That's correct. It's, it's due to a flooding issue that they had in the lower basement level, and the floor waved, buckled, and they're replacing it. It used to be a, a former, uh, wood shop, so it had, um, tongue and groove.
I'm just wondering, like, we give the Board of Ed monies for all of this, and I'm just, I, I don't wanna become bad of or seem like I'm, I don't want them to have money, but I'm just trying to understand why we're giving.
To be, to be quite honest with you, um, with all due respect, the majority of the applications that we get, uh, for CDPG funding is public service.
Okay.
Which is by far the lowest amount that we can provide funding for, unfortunately. The Board of Ed asks on an annual basis for, you know, whether it's, uh, a playground structure that needs rubber, or, uh, the basketball court needs to be resurfaced. And they're one of the few applicants that we really receive applications for, for the infrastructure other than city. And, and the majority of the, uh, all of the funding that goes to any Board of Ed is for our Title I schools. Okay, we, we did use unallocated funds, uh, for an emergency asbestos abatement at Forest School due to flooding. It was an emergency. We couldn't allow our children to go in to a school that had cracked and uplifted tiles. So we paid CDPG funds for the abatement of the asbestos, and the Board of Education paid for the new flooring that needed to go down.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are these, are these grants, or are they paid back to your office?
No, no, they're, they're grants. We consider, uh, our public schools as neighborhood facilities because they're utilized by all of our residents throughout the year, including during the summer. So it, it is considered a public facility, and it is considered a neighborhood facility, and whatever, like I said, Title I schools only. If, if Pagels or McRill requests funds, they're not gonna get it, but our Title I schools will be highly considered by our Citizen Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just wanna say that that money or those monies are not money that can be applied to a service, a public service. So when we get our budget, and only a certain percentage can go to services.
Which we would love more.
Which we would love more, but the government determines what we can do and what we cannot do. Then from there, this is the other money that is used for infrastructure. So any money that goes to help the students, because that's gonna help the students from not tripping and not falling and being in unsafe scenario. But it was not money that came out of wheat, or it's not money that came out of a head start program, or it's not money that came out of youth services, because we are maximizing all of that money first, and this is what is left for the infrastructure.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Councilman Callahan?
Yeah, it's, it's been a very hot day, don't worry about it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So maybe that explains, I was just looking at some of the categories, and again, thank you for everything that you do. But going back to our last meeting with, um, Mr. John Carano here, who helped us tremendously to understand the whole domestic violence initiative we're going forward with. So this one, um, is that why, um, the request was seventeen thousand and they're just getting nine? Is because that's the cap on it?
Because if, if we start taking away from others, okay, there was a decrease in wheat, and, uh, Councilman Vargo, you know, you had some great questions that you emailed me and, and I responded to, but, they have a very difficult decision.
I'm sure.
Okay, and, um, if, listen, I, I'm honestly, any part of the annual action plan that I'm a part of, there is never a year that I don't say, we need more money in public service. That's the bottom line. We need more money in public service. It's easy for them to say, okay, we'll give the Board of Ed twenty-five thousand because we have that money anyway, right? So it, those aren't the difficult ones to go through. It's, it's the, the, the whole. So it, those aren't the difficult ones to go through, it's, it's the, the, the whole public service that are by far the ones that...
Underfunded.
Make, make me very upset.
And, and if, again, I walked through the timeline pretty quickly, but the, the Citizen Advisory Committee is making decisions before we know how much money we have as well. So part of it is, okay, we got dropped seven percent, now we, how do we drop that seven percent? So not only is it, I know you wanted twenty, I'm gonna give you ten, now it's, I can't even give you the ten, what do I have to do, I have to drop it seven percent, so that's, that happens after it's already publicly announced. But we do put a, a...
Disclosure, uh, there's a disclaimer or disclosure, um, on, on the, the public service no-, the public notice that says that the, the budget would be modified based on the final allocation.
Okay. And then as far as applications, you said that come in, what was the dates that you talked about that?
The applications go out in November, usually early November, okay, and they have until, uh, the Friday before Christmas, wha-, whatever that falls on.
For all these categories, you mean?
For, it go-, those applications go out citywide, city council members get them, department heads get them, the Board of Education gets it, uh, all, all individuals who reach out to us throughout the, the program year, they continuously remain on our list, and they, even if they've gotten it and then they're off, they still, everybody stays on that.
I see, okay. All right, yeah, 'cause I saw the, um, just one more, um, comment or question, I saw the, also the, um, and I saw in the notes to come out for the week for the city about, um, the housing and the assistance for that. How does that work? Is that an application process as well, or is that...
Columbus House applies on an annual basis, th- they're the only agency who deals with supportive housing, homelessness, okay, other than...
Loans, the loans that they're talking about here, the...
The loans?
Well, it's just about helping out with first-time homeowners and...
Oh, no, that, that program is run directly through our department.
Okay.
Uh, the single-family rehab, multifamily rehab, down payment assistance...
Right.
And, um, ramps and lifts come directly out of our department, and we send out bid proposals.
And then when does that application have to be in buyer, is there no time?
It's an ongoing.
It's ongoing.
Ongoing, yes.
Okay, and that's the information that's in the flyer that I believe went out this week and the city knows.
Correct, yes.
Okay, good, I, I, 'cause I wanna share that as well.
Yes.
Throughout, throughout the year.
That's throughout the year, that's not a timeline.
No, that is not a timeline, as long as the funds continue to be available.
Right.
The program is active and running.
I think it's fantastic, and I think it's great that they not only have for the first time home buyers, they also have, I noticed, two programs for renovations, which is great for single and multifamily.
Has to be owner occupied, though.
Of course.
And, and there's income level.
Sure.
The renovation money is probably easier to get at than the down payment assistance money. The thresholds are not made by us, they're made by the government.
Correct.
I'm sorry, by, by the average area.
Area median income.
Yep.
And if you're, if you qualify to be able to put in an application for down payment assistance, chances of getting a mortgage in today's market are probably not too good.
Yeah, we've not been very successful.
You have to be a very, kinda, almost has to match perfect in order for you to be able to grab seven thousand or...
Seventy-five hundred, max.
The renovation one, too, is very interesting, so thank you, thank you for all you do, I appreciate it. Thank you for explaining it.
And, and just always remember that, um, the mission in the Community Development Administration is to take care of our low moderate income individuals and families as well as individuals with disabilities. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tucker, do you have something to add?
Oh, sorry.
I don't want you to feel like we're picking on you.
No, you're not.
You started the second part of this conversation.
See what you started?
No, I just, I, I can hold off my other question.
No, no, please don't.
My question really is going around... It's going back to the, you know, question around, you know, the funding for the Board of Ed, because this happened last year, you would've said that they would've had to apply for this last year, that was before the budget cycle and all of that, so this is, I'm just questioning why it went through this avenue instead of coming into the budget request cycle, why?
Just keep in mind that what, whatever we can do to assist you, okay, um, if they don't ask for it from us, they're gonna ask you for it, so...
Right, and that's my point, I mean, and to your point, the funds that you're allocating are for people who have needs, you know, and, and...
And, and it's...
And don't other, and don't have other means, right? They have another way to get those funds, that's the reason why I'm asking the question, so.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I understand completely.
Yeah, that's all.
But I can assure you that there are kids in their Title I schools.
I get it, and I thank you for that.
Just, just to understand, there's nothing coming away, but the Board of Ed gets doesn't affect, as we said a couple times, wheat or any of those agents, just so you know, I just wanted to make sure that you understood.
Got it, thank you.
Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Rosa, you answered all my questions earlier, so I thank you for that, and I wasn't, didn't have anything to ask, but Commissioner Carano, you said something that sparked my interest.
As I say, I talk to you.
Look, look what you did. The, the down payment assistance program, so that, that's income-based.
Correct.
Right? And you said that folks who qualify for these monies, uh, were, will probably be hard-pressed to get conventional financing for a mortgage?
Yes.
So is there, how, how much of these funds do we actually, are we able to use?
We, we can handle upwards of over a hundred applications annually for the down payment assistance program. Um, in West Haven, the funds, based on the guidelines, uh, you have to meet hus-, income level guidelines, you have to come up with three percent of the sale price, and that's up to seventy-five hundred that we give you is gonna give you that other half a percent in order to get you qualified, okay? Now, there are other, uh, grants available, ours is what's considered a, a forgivable loan. If you live in the house for five years, you don't pay anything back, the loan is forgiven and I release the lien on your property. But there are other programs out there and available that will allow them to use the money to buy in West Haven, okay? So oftentimes, we get the request, well, we got the down payment covered, but we wanna use your money for the closing costs. Our program is designed to minimize the amount of the mortgage that the individual is going to be taking out. By us providing closing costs, we're not accomplishing that goal, okay? So it's unfortunate, but the majority of the time, they don't come back, if they do qualify, because the only thing that's required with the down payment assistance is a, a letter from a lender pre-qualifying you, and the majority of the time, once they start the mortgage process, it, it doesn't come to fruition.
So out of the almost seventy thousand that was allocated last year, historically, does your, is your department able to expend that amount?
So it, whatever funds we don't expend goes into unallocated funding, okay? It, so it stays in the US Treasury for up to five years, and it goes in as unallocated. And then when things arise, such as the, you know, the mayor looking for additional funds for saving projects, right? We can say, yes, we have those unallocated funds, okay, and we repurpose those funds.
Okay, so it's not like if we don't use it, we lose it?
We don't, we don't lose it, okay? It has to be used within a five-year period, okay, but it stays in the US Treasury as an unallocated.
Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you both so much again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to set a public hearing, so I'm gonna have to have our motion and our second rescinded, please.
I withdraw my motion.
It was me? I withdraw my second.
Thank you. Um, could we please set a public hearing for, is it July twenty-first? At six fifty, please?
Is it twenty-first?
I think so.
Twenty-eighth, I think.
Is it the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, thank you. At six fifty, yes.
All right, six fifty on July twenty-eighth, we will set that public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, I appreciate it. Next up is Communication E. from Dave Taylor, Assistant Finance Director regarding a transfer of funds of two million, two hundred dollars from the Medical Internal Service Fund, six zero three, to the Workers' Compensation Internal Service Fund, six oh two, and the transfer of three hundred and forty-six dollar, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars from account number one nine zero zero nine 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 zero dash five six zero one zero, unallocated contingency to account one four zero 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 one zero dash five two six eight zero, Town Aid Road. Mr. Gormany?
All right, um...
One of the, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Second.
I have a second, please. Mr. Gormany, I'm sorry, thank you.
No problem. Um, we're passing around, I'm passing around a, a document just so it's easier to, um, go through the first part of this transfer, but, um, I will just start off the, uh, presentation. We have what's called internal service funds, which are common in municipalities, those usually handle workers' comp, our general liability, and our medical, so what happens is we account for those three areas separately than the general fund, um, which is also reflected in our audits. So we are asking for a transfer because one of our internal service funds is actually, um, has more of a balance in it, um, so when you, everybody have the sheet, yes. So the first column on the sheet is the medical fund, our medical internal service fund, so that's where all our medical claims, things like that, our li-, basically our liability account for our medical comes, comes through. As of the audit of six thirty, we had a balance here in there of two-point-three million. We are in May at two-point-four million, um, as far as claims, liabilities, and things like that, um, and when we look at the budget, um, which you'll see at the projected twenty-five, we're projecting three-point-two million in assets, which is really the revenue and things that come into that fund, and liabilities of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, so again, this is our liability, it's not the claims themselves or anything like that, there are a couple of different factors that go in as far as like how much we budget, our claim experience, our incurred but not reported, there are things that go in to that. Um, but as of six thirty, twenty-five, we're, we're looking at about two-point-five as a balance to the positive. Now, when you move over to other columns, our workers' compensation column, you'll see going through, you know, similar exercise, we started off in the negative, um, and we are projecting to end in the negative in that workers' comp column of two-point-three million, uh, negative two-point-three million. What we're looking to do is transfer over the savings in the medical side to offset the, uh, negative in the workers' compensation side. That's what this transfer is looking to do. Now, when you look at all three internal service funds as a whole, because that's what we do, um, in general, you'll still see, we're still in the positive when you combine the bottom line of all three, but cleaning up and not having a negative in one of the internal service funds is definitely something that the credit rating agencies look at when we're going out the bond, i- is something that's positive in our audit because none of the internal service funds are showing a, uh, deficit within them. Um, so again, this is really to improve our financial footprint, um, here in West Haven by doing this transfer and getting the workers' comp, the workers' comp liability out of the negative, and we've tal-, also talked in the past about, um, the, how the five-year plan, um, has had a plan to also get that workers' compensation fund out of the negative, so we're right there on that five-year plan path as well. So again, this is really an accounting transfer, that really transfers money from one internal service fund to the other to really offset that negative.
Thank you. Can you explain the unallocated contingency account to the Town Aid Road, please?
Yep, so the unallocated contingency, um, what we're doing is we're shoring up, um, one of the budgetary items, um, within the city budget, so the city receives six hundred and eighteen thousand in Town Aid for road. Um, by state statute, there's a variety of things that we can use that funding for, um, that, again, we'll be looking at as we're closing out the year. Um, unfortunately, the expense side of the budget didn't match the revenue side, which is also what is looked at as well. Um, we did correct that, thank you, in fiscal year twenty-six's budget where the expense actually meets that revenue, so we're looking at matching that up, so when we do our state report, um, you know, the expenses that come out of there, we have in one area and we can match the revenue that's received.
So the unallocated contingency to the Town Aid Road is basically used for city projects, street signs?
Yeah, there's a lot of things, um, the state statute really guides that, it's really, um, that's funding that the state gives you that's related to roads and roads that lead to highways and things like that.
Right.
Um, within the city, so we can use traffic signs, um, traffic administration, um, snowplowing, just different things like that.
Does it include the traffic lights as well?
Um, there is, there is a, um, there is a limit on the traffic side.
Right.
I know signs are part of that, like, as far as repairs and signals and things, that's in that gray area. Yeah, but, um, but we are looking at and allocating that funding to get to six eighteen, which is why earlier I said the projection may change as we are balancing out the books and looking at these type of revenue items, and that surplus will go up and down, so, um, again, this really gets us to matching what the state gives us, and then looking at those expenditures, matching the actual revenue.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep.
Anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Gormany?
One of the boarder chairmen, I just wanted to, uh...
Yes.
Let the clerk know that she has arrived.
Welcome.
Let the record reflect, my shining light or star has arrived.
Yay! That's awesome. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Gormany? I'll open it up to the entire council, anyone on the council have any questions? Sure.
So the difference from the medical and the workers' comp, the two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, we're just going to have, that difference will all just be put into the workers' comp, and that monies will be there in workers' comp?
Yeah, yeah, so it's really just making workers' comp positive, and then the medical would drop by the negative amount, that bottom line.
Got it, okay.
That's all that's, that's all that your transfer is doing. But again, I just wanna point out, right now, we're projecting, if you look at all three, it'll still be in a surplus by about eight hundred and eight thousand.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gormany? Thank you, Mr. Gormany, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, seeing there are no more questions, all those approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And for the next communication, Communication C. from the June nine, twenty-twenty-five Agenda, from the Community Development Administration regarding approval of the program year five-one Neighborhood Assistance Program Budget, West Haven Child Development Center, Inc., fifteen thousand dollars, Ward Heitman House Museum Foundation, Inc., twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and West Haven Community House, twenty thousand dollars. I'd like to open this up for discussion, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding this communication on the, on the committee? Anyone on the council? And I just wanted to make it a point that these are tax credits, we are not giving money. Seeing there are no more questions, all those approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Mayor Bor, did you have something? Nope, you're good? All right, just making sure. Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? You have a question? Oh, you're abstaining. Sorry. That's okay. Motion carries. Chairman, it is now eight oh four and your Committee on Finance is now closed.
Thank you very much. Next up we have Legislative Matters, Chairman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the time is eight oh five, your Committee on Legislative Matters is now in session, council members present are Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Melton, Councilman Johnstone, and myself acting as Chair. On this evening's agenda is Communication C from the April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five Agenda from Mayor Dorinda Borrer regarding an ordinance amending Chapter one seven eight of the Code of the City of West Haven posting of bills, I am looking for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of Legislative Matters, the time is still eight oh five.
Thank you kindly, next up we have Personnel and Civil Service, Chairwoman Melton.
Thank you Chairman Pascal, the time is now eight oh six, and the Personnel and Civil Service Committee is now in session, present are Councilman Lox, Councilman Vargo, Councilman Donovan, Councilman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Melton acting as Chair. From tonight's agenda, we have before us Communication F from Mayor Dorinda Borrer regarding the appointment of Paula Capuccia, R.N., seven eighty-seven First Avenue, West Haven, Connecticut, to the West Haven Seniors Commission. Ms. Capuccia's appointment will be for a term of five years, effective immediately and will expire on June thirtieth of twenty thirty. I am looking for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I've, I've known Ms. Capuccia, she lives in my district and I've known her for a while, I used to work with her husband actually, very good people, she would be a great asset to the Seniors Commission here, so I'm definitely in favor of putting Ms. Capuccia on here. She's been involved with the city for a few years now, so she's really looking forward to doing this, and I think she'd be a good asset, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan, any other discussion? Council, Councilman Vargo?
Thank you ma'am Chair, just for the record that we did receive her road registration card and her ethics form, everything appears to be in order, and I thank her for donating her time to serve on this very important board. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Yeah, she says she's a great appointment and that the elderly commission has really hit the ground running and I think she'll be a great compliment. She went, you know, did her due diligence and actually went and met with the other elderly commission members, so I think that's, we don't see that very often where you go to a commission just to make sure it gels and then decides that you want to be a part of it, so she's willing to volunteer and we're happy she is.
That's great. Any other discussion? Her resume looks fantastic, I think we're really fortunate to have her. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. That concludes the business of the Personnel and Civil Service Committee and the time is now eight oh eight, thank you Chairman Pascal.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Moving on to Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan.
Thank you Chairman, the time is now eight oh nine and your Committee on Public Lands is now in session, members present, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Callahan, Councilman Vargo, Councilman Johnstone, and myself acting as Chair. We have before us tonight Communication G from Mayor Dorinda Borrer regarding a request for approval of the sale of the following two properties to West Haven Housing Authority, DBA Savin Rock Communities, Inc., SRC, for fifty thousand dollars. Point two five acre property located at eleven eighty-five Campbell Avenue with the, with the city map lot designation of map sixty and lot one twenty-four, and a point one eight acre property located on eleven eighty-nine Campbell Avenue with the city map lot designation of map sixty and lot twenty-two with an open space deed restriction. I'd like to open this up for discussion, make a motion for open discussion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Attorney Jello, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
Good, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you for showing up. We do, really appreciate it. All right, so this, this property here is going to definitely benefit Senior Preet Housing over there at the Housing Authority, because they are in desperate need of space, and having this deed restriction I think is a good thing. Got, anyone from the committee have any questions? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello Attorney Jello?
Hello.
My only question is the communication says that we are selling it to West Haven Housing Authority, DBA Savin Rock Communities, Inc.
Yep.
But the sales agreement has us selling it to John Preet Apartments LLC. Just confirm what entity we're selling it to?
I believe it's for, just kind of a further DBA, a, as they're currently doing business as John Preet Apartments, so.
Okay.
It is the West Haven Housing Authority, but they're doing business as, what you just said.
Okay. That was my own question, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else on the committee? Councilman Callahan?
That was, I just wanted to kind of bounce off of Councilman Vargo too, is that we were talking, you know, we were just, you know, wanted to just be sure it's not the management company that's getting this, it's the actual.
Yes, the actual West Haven Housing Authority, yes.
And then I know part of it's going to be for more parking, I believe.
If possibly, I'm, I'm not sure a hundred percent, I know it's open space, it's, no structures are going to, it's not the intent to build any structures on any of those lights, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Anybody else from the committee? All right, with that, I'm going to be requesting a public hearing, so I would ask that we, whoever had a second?
I resent my second.
I resent my first.
Thank you. Chairman, I would like to have a public hearing on these, on this matter on July twenty-eighth at six fifty-five.
On the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth of July.
Okay, six fifty-five, sounds good.
I mean, you can have it on the twenty-first, but you'll be by yourself.
That sounds promising, actually.
Thank you, thank you Mike. Next, we have Communication H from my, Attorney Jello Deputy Corporation Counsel regarding an offer to transfer title to the real property located at one sixty-four Roosevelt Avenue from Donna Marie Chapine and Marino Lamoro to the city of West Haven. I want to open this up for discussion first.
Motion.
And, can I get a second? Thank you. Discussion, you might as well come on back up, sir. I'm always in favor of selling off our property so we can get them going, I am hardly ever in favor of getting property. Now, I don't, I'm just, I don't think, I talked to the committee, I didn't, a lot of us, it's not really going to benefit the city of West Haven or the residents who receive this property.
I, I don't believe it, well, this is just a situation where the property owners have reached out to the city to say they don't want to pay the taxes anymore and they would just like to kind of donate it to the city. It's on a paper road, it's a vacant lot, there's no in, ingress or egress, so I mean, you know, I have an obligation to bring it to the city council, but I, I don't see the benefit that the city would have for accepting it.
Anybody on the committee have any question? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you. Attorney Jello, just to your knowledge, did the, the owners of this property, do you know if there's been any discussions with neighboring owners about possibly absorbing their lot and?
That I don't know, I'm not sure if they had any conversations with, with other contiguous property.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Callahan?
Hi, I just wanted to see as well, I know there's other little pockets of property around it, do we, we own some of those pockets of property?
I, I think on that paper road, there's maybe one or two other lots, they're, they're also not contiguous, they're kind of spread out.
Okay.
There is a, a, a title holder called like the, the remnants, developer's remnants, and it seems like there was a, a larger subdivision plan, and then for whatever reason it didn't work out, so they have these little fractured lots, but they're really, it's a paper road, you can't really get in or out of the property, I think that the properties need a lot of work if you wanted to try to make them developable.
So I, I would imagine that they probably want to give the property back to not only taxes, but they don't probably want the liability.
Correct, yeah, we don't either.
How big is the, I know we probably have the thing, how big is it? It's not that big, right? It's all rock, I believe?
I, I believe.
Little rock.
Councilman Vargo has been out there in his spare time. This is point, point oh seven acres.
Not buildable.
Vacant lot, I, I don't believe it, I don't believe it's buildable, there's nothing else built on that street, and the properties that are around it that do have, it looks like residences, are larger than this lot. So if you look at the map that was attached to the, the letter.
Right, right.
You know, this is not owned by, this is owned by somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Councilman Johnstone?
Thank you Chairman. Hey Mike, in all your years of doing this, I'm sure you've seen this situation before, is that accurate?
Yeah.
Sometimes, okay. What, what, what has tended to be the result of this situation? Because I'm sure it's probably easier, and I could be wrong, this is why you're here and this is why you're at the podium. Has it tended to be an easier situation where it's donated to the municipality and then the municipality can then sit down with the surrounding property owners, if you will, and strike a more negotiable deal, because there's got to be somebody in that neighborhood that would want it to possibly make their property bigger, but they don't, I mean, what was it evaluated at? Am I reading this accurately? It was appraised at fifteen three and then assessed at ten seven?
Yeah, and that's, that's what it has it as, I'm, I'm not quite.
So you're saying, so it, it is unbuildable, it's rocky, it's, it's gross. Do, do you see this, do you see this as poss, I don't want to, it's the only word I can think of, is possibly flipping a property where we help out the people donating it to us, but then we're able to have a quick sit-down and say, who wants a bargain to make their property bigger?
I mean, if, if that were something to explore, I would want, I personally would want the neighbors to show interest first before we accept it.
And we don't know if any neighbors.
And we don't know if anybody really wants it, because what happens too is if somebody says, all right, I want to incorporate that into my lot, their taxes are also going to go up.
Right.
As a result of that, so people are on, you know, not everybody's willing to do that.
Correct, okay. It was just a question of curiosity, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, since I was called out by Attorney Jello, I, I did visit the property and took some, took, took a look at it, the, it abuts, it's at the end of a dead-end street, the properties to the north, it, it abuts, and tho, those are developed properties with homes on it, the northeast is also a developed lot, everything that is south, I'm sorry, southwest of that, is just, is overgrown, and on this particular property, there's a long strip of very large rocks that if, you know, a child got over there, it's, it's hazardous, so I don't think that the city really wants that kind of, that, that kind of liability. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else from the committee? Yeah, Councilman.
I like your point about the neighbors, was it or is it, or how does that work, I should say, to put it out to the neighbors to see if they're interested?
Maybe mail them a letter and just say, hey, look, there might be some availability for this vacant lot, they, they've shown.
They have?
I mean, if, if, obviously the, the current owners of this lot want to get rid of it.
Correct.
So, I mean, it, it would be in their best interest too to contact the neighbors and say, hey, why don't you just deed it to them versus us, either way, it's off your books, which is kind of what they're looking to do.
Was it approached to them that way?
Right now, they, they approached us and say, do we want it? I say, I don't know, I'll, I'll bring it to the council and let you know.
So maybe if we don't, we can suggest it?
Yeah, oh, in, in the response to this, you know, however this goes, we can just suggest to them that they contact other contiguous property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Before we, the committee makes a decision, I make a motion, Mayor, do you have anything you wanted to say?
Yep, I do, you know, and listening to Councilman Vargo speak, now that I think about it, I don't think we did a proper flood assessment on this, so as much as I hate to pull back something that, you know, we've talked about, I, I think we need to do that to make sure we understand all of our liabilities, so I would actually recommend that you hold this.
Thank you. Anybody else on the committee? All right, with that being said, I need a second. Resent your second? Send the first?
I resent my first.
Thank you. At this point, we will be holding it in our committee till we get some information on the flooding. Time is now eight twenty and your Committee on Public Lands is now over.
Thank you very much, we will now reconvene to council as a whole at eight twenty. Moving on to unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we enter executive session and invite Attorney Jello and the mayor and the clerk.
This is for this personnel issue?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
All right, I have a motion to go into executive session regarding a personnel issue and a second. Do we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Right now, we're going to go into executive session, so we do need to clear the room to discuss this personnel issue.
And the time is eight twenty-one.
Yes, correct.
All right, the time is now 9:49. We are coming out of executive session and we're going to go on a brief recess. The time is also 9:49. Enjoy your recess.
All right, thank you for your patience. We are now back from recess at 10:34. Just as a refresher, under unfinished business, we were speaking of the registrar of voters' personnel issue, and what I'd like to do right now is to make a motion and have a roll call vote. Clerk, can you read the motion when ready?
All right, I'm gonna read the motion. It's a motion to amend the 2025-2026 approved budget with respect only to the two job positions, now known as assistant registrar, to temporarily return the job titles to administrative assistant under line item 11300010-51000, regular wages, registrar of voters, personnel detail. Subject to, the elected Republican registrar of voters provide the Corporation Council Office with a list of all job responsibilities for the position known as administrative assistant by July 3, 2025, so that the Corporation Council may request an official determination from the Secretary of State as to whether or not the position as described by the registrar of voters complies with Title IX of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
You make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just, it's my expectation that we have right now a opinion from the Corporation Council's office that certain functions are required to be made by a deputy or an assistant registrar, so I would expect that, that we follow that opinion until we have a better understanding from the state. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilwoman Callahan.
Thank you. We, I just want everyone to know that we have spent a lot of time on this. We did not, I mean, take this lightly by any means. This has been hours and hours and hours. I just wanted to be known that there was no political agenda on our side. We simply were just trying to do what was asked of us. Us as a team and as a council worked together diligently to do the best we can for the budget season and what's asked of, and I personally, is this not the time?
No, Mackie, your mic, can you, I'm sorry, can you just, I think she's, you're giving her feedback. Go ahead, sorry.
Is this, am I okay with this?
Yes, you're good.
I just personally felt very attacked the last meeting, and I was very offended, the words that came out to us, that it was almost a malicious thing. We really worked really hard on this budget. We did line by line. We were here every night to almost midnight for almost a month. And I just wanted to know that, you know, unfortunately, the registrar of voters' office on the Republican side could not be here for the council, you know, when, when we were here for all the budget meetings, and I think that maybe it might have cleared up some things. But anyway, we have no political agenda. We just want to do best for our constituents in our community, and more importantly, stay on track with what the job descriptions are and what they are on a state level. So I just wanted to make that clear, that myself personally, I don't know if I could speak for everyone on the council, but I felt really bad after the last meeting. I was very offended by how we were talked to and treated, and I just didn't really appreciate it, and think we deserved it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Mellie Garthwaite?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brian Lox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Edward McMillan?
C.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Christopher Vargo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Katie Muller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so I will follow that up with, because Joanne's in the audience, if you can get with the Corporation Council for the documents that he might need from you, and what was voted on tonight, just for clarity if you need to, and then we can move on with the agenda. Perfect. All right. All right, moving on to committee reports. Will the clerk please read Communication A, if you can find it, overpayment refunds into the record?
Communication A from the task collector regarding overpayment refunds for June 2025, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic, thank you. First up, we have the Finance Committee. Chairwoman Akbarali.
Thank you, Chairman. Communication B to the Honorable City Council of the City of Westhaven. Your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of the animal shelter donations, reports that the committee met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, the Westhaven Police Department has received the following donations totaling $401.40 to the animal shelter. Per Connecticut Statute 7-148C, 3, A and B, the General Order 98-04 are forwarding these donations for approval. The City Council approved the following motion at the regular meeting held on June 23, 2025. Resolved, the City Council of the City of Westhaven hereby approves the animal shelter donations to be deposited into the animal shelter donations account number 10100000-28285. Named Callahan, $50. Alfoncia Burke, $25. Susan Alonso, $30. Vale LeChance, $50. Deborah Johnson, $50. Frank R. Malone, $50. Linda M. Venus, $75. Frontstream SPV LLC, $71.40 totaling $401.40. And I so move.
Thank you very much. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding animal shelter donations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second over there. Do I have any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Oh, here it is. Sorry, they were out of order. Communication C to the Honorable City Council of the City of Westhaven. Your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of the delinquent tax lien assignment list, reports that the committee met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Whereas, the City of Westhaven requested bids for the assignment of liens for delinquent sewer fees and taxes on the grand list of 2023 in the aggregate amount of $1,109,367.75. And whereas, Tower Capital Management was a higher bidder with a purchase price of $1,245,796.15, or 107.25% of the amount of liens to be assigned. And whereas, it is the recommendation of both the City of Westhaven's Finance Director and Tax Manager that lower Capital Management's bid and proposal be accepted. Be it resolved, that acting pursuant to the provisions of the Connecticut General Statute Section 12-195H, the City Council of the City of Westhaven hereby approves and authorizes the assigned of said liens for delinquent sewer charges and taxes totaling $1,109,367.75 to Tower Capital Management in consideration of the sum of $1,245,796.25. Be it further resolved, Dorinda Borer, as mayor of the City of Westhaven, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the City of Westhaven, and to do and perform all acts and, and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. And I so move.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding the approval of the sale and assignment of delinquent tax liens to Tower Capital Management.
Second.
There's my second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Communication D is the Community Development Administration regarding approval of the block, block grant program year 51 budget. We are block, block grant program year 51 budget. We are setting a public hearing for July 28 at 6:50 PM. And I so move. Thank you. Communication E to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven. Your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the matter of transfer of funds, reports that the committee met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves and transfer of funds from account number 19009990-56010, unallocated contingency to account number 1012004545248, Town Road, in the amount of $346.20, I'm sorry, $346,029. And I... Yeah, I saw that. And furthermore, to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, do I, do you want me to read the whole name? To, your Committee on Finance, to whom was referred the said matter of transfer of funds, reports that the committee met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. That the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the transfer of funds in the amount of $2,200 from the Medical Internal Services Fund 602, which is overfunded, to the Workers' Compensation Internal Service Fund 602, which is underfunded for the fiscal year 2025, and I so move.
Is the Medical Service Fund 603?
Yes. So there's an error on the, on the resolution. It's 603. Thank you.
I have a motion to approve a matter regarding the transfer of funds of 2.2 million from the Medical Internal Service Fund 603 to the Workers' Compensation Internal Fund 602, and the transfer of $346,029 from account...
No.
Oh?
Yeah, no, no, I didn't hear it. So the unallocated contingency account number...
Chair, your mic.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thought I hit it. The unallocated contingency account number 1012004545248 is incorrect, and the town, oh, the town aid road. So the numbers are incorrect on that.
Account, oh, what should it be?
So, transfer of funds, so the first one is correct, unallocated contingency.
Right.
So the town aid one should be 14000010-52680.
Town Aid Road.
Yep, Town Aid Road, sorry.
That makes it correct?
That makes it correct.
All right, let me run through it again. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding the transfer of funds of 2.2 million from the Medical Internal Service Fund 603 to the Workers' Compensation Internal Service Fund 602, and the transfer of $346,029 from account 1900999056010, unallocated contingency to account 14000010-52680, Town Aid Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, so I don't have...
Chairman, so it's the next thing for those three. And furthermore, and furthermore. So you can do it all.
Okay. There's... Yeah, I was gonna say they're, they're quite wordy. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
To the Honorable City Council for the City of West Haven, the Finance Committee reports that they, they met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. Whereas, the Ward Hyedman, Hyedman House Museum Foundation, Inc., a tax-exempt nonprofit organization has applied through the West Haven Community Development Administration for funds provided by the 2025 State of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, NNA, in the amount of $24,000 to be used for an emergency conservation HVAC system. And whereas, the NNA delegates authority to the City of West Haven, acting through its city council, to approve such applications for funding. And whereas, a public hearing on the application was held before the regular meeting of the West Haven City Council on June 23, 2025, in accordance to the requirements of the NNA. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the application of the West Haven Community House Association, Inc., for the NNA funds in the amount of $24,000 to be used for an energy conservation HVAC system. And whereas, the West Haven Community House Association, Inc., a tax-exempt nonprofit organization, has applied through the West Haven Community Development Administration for funds provided by the 2025 State of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, NNA, in the amount of $20,000 to be used for energy conservation and capital improvements of its facilities. And whereas, the NNA delegates authority to the City of West Haven, acting through its city council, to approve such applications for funding. And whereas, a public hearing on the application was duly held before the regular meeting of the City, West Haven City Council on June 23, 2025, in accordance to the requirements of the NNA. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the application of the West Haven Community House Association, Inc., for the NNA funds in the amount of $20,000 to be used for energy conservation and capital improvements of its facilities. And whereas, the West Haven Child Development Center, a tax-exempt nonprofit organization, has applied through the West Haven Community Development Administration for funds provided by the 2025 State of Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act, NNA, in the amount of $15,000 to be used for energy-efficient air filtration systems for its classrooms. And whereas, the NNA delegates authority to the City of West Haven, acting through its city council, to approve such applications for funding. And whereas, a public hearing on the application was held before the regular meeting of the West Haven City Council on June 23, 2025, in accordance to the requirements of the NNA. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the application of the West Haven Child Development Center for NNA funds in the amount of $15,000 to be used for energy-efficient air filtration systems for its classrooms. And Sarah so moves.
I have a motion.
Thank you, Stacy.
Very welcome.
I have a motion to approve a matter regarding approval of the program year 51 Neighborhood Assistance Program budget, West Haven Child Development Center, Inc., $15,000; Ward Hyedman House Museum Foundation, Inc., $24,500; and West Haven Community House, $20,000. Do I have a second? Second down there. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Seconded by Matt McMillan. His microphone wasn't on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 10:53, and that concludes our business with the Finance Committee.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Legislative Matters Committee up next. Chairman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Legislative Matters Committee met on this, what day is it? 23rd day of June 2025, to consider Communication C from the April 28, 2025 Agenda from Mayor Dorinda Borer regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 178 of the Code of the City of West Haven posting of bills. The committee unanimously, unanimously, whatever that word is, I am tired, approved an amendment, and I will read the summary. "Chapter 178 prohibits the posting of bills on utility poles, trees, shrubs, and rocks, or any other natural or artificial structure in any public way or grounds within the limits of the City of West Haven. The proposed amendment defines and distinguishes between commercial and non-commercial bills, prohibits the bills, the posting of commercial and non-commercial bills on utility poles and similar structures, and on public property, provides exemptions for non-commercial posts concerning missing persons or pets, provides exceptions for non-commercial freestanding notices of tag sales and other neighborhood events with the permission of the police department, provides exceptions for educational, school-based, youth-based, nonprofit, and religious programs, plays and activities with the permission of the police department, and provides fines of up to $50 for non-commercial violations, and up to $200 for commercial violations. And I move to, to approve the amended ordinance."
Fantastic. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 178 of the Code of the City of West Haven.
Okay.
Posting of bills. There's my second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And that's it for you, Mr. Vargo?
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. That moves us to Personnel and Civil Service. Chairwoman Melton.
Thank you, Chairman Pascal. Communication F from Mayor Dorinda Borer regarding the appointment of Paula Capuccia, RN 787 First Avenue, West Haven, Connecticut, to the West Haven Seniors Commission. Ms. Capuccia's appointment will be for a term of five years, effective immediately, and will expire on June 30 of 2030. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee, I think I'm repeating myself, aren't I? Never mind. But I'm gonna repeat myself. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your Committee on Personnel and Civil Service, to whom was referred the matter of the appointment of Paula Capuccia, RN 787 First Avenue, West Haven, Connecticut, to the West Haven Seniors Commission. Ms. Capuccia's appointment will be for a term of five years, effective immediately, and will expire on June 30 of 2030. Reports that the committee met on the 23rd day of June 2025 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolved, that the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the appointment of Paula Capuccia to the West Haven Senior Citizen Commission for a term of five years to commence on the date of the passage of this resolution. And I so move.
Fantastic, thank you. I have a motion to approve a matter regarding the appointment of Paula Capuccia, RN, to the West Haven Seniors Commission. Ms. Capuccia's appointment will be for a term of five years, effective immediately, and will expire on June 30 of 2030. Do I...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And that's it for you, Ms. Melton. All set with your committee?
Eleven.
Perfect. Moving on to public lands, Chairman Donovan.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have Communication G from Mayor Dorinda Borer regarding a request for approval of sale of the following two properties to West Haven Housing Authority, DBA, Seven Rock Communities, Inc., for $50,000. A .25 acre property located on 1185 Campbell Avenue with the city map lot designation of MAP 60 and a Lot 124. And a .18 acre property located at 1189 Campbell Avenue with the, with the city map lot designation of MAP 60, MAP 60, and Lot 122 with an open space, deed restriction. Request a public hearing for July 28, 6:55.
July 28, it's 6:55, granted?
Thank you. Also, before, we have Communication H. It's about 164 Roosevelt Avenue. We are holding that in committee, and I so move.
Fantastic. Moving on to Council Liaison Reports. Anybody have a Council Liaison Report this evening? Seeing none? Any new business? New business? Councilwoman Callahan.
I know it's been a long night, but I just want you all to keep our friend Mary Beth Preett in your prayers. Her daughter's been missing since Saturday evening. She's 14 years old. If you look on my Facebook page, I've shared it twice. Last seen in a silver Kia with two, two, two men. So please, everyone, share it. You never know who has seen what. But, you know, it's been a couple days now, so keep, keep the family in, in your prayers and share it, because you just don't know who might have seen what in what car. So we don't even know if they're still in Connecticut, but appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? All right, Chairman, Councilman Vargo?
Just want to quickly recognize, West Haven PD made a valiant effort to stop, I guess, what they're classifying as a possible street takeover by the Beach Area. One officer was injured by an ATV. I believe both occupants of that vehicle were, are in custody, but hoping that the officer pulls through. Well wishes to him or her, and just well done to the police department. Councilman Johnstone?
Thank you, Chairman. The offer's fine. Just a little, long story short, there was an officer that was struck by an ATV. It wasn't a serious injury. They're gonna be out for a couple days for evaluation, but pretty much bumps and bruises. So, excuse me. Other than that, this is just a reminder to those out there, this is not gonna be tolerated in our city. I've talked to the chief, I've talked to several of the tenants. They're doing anything and everything, and they encourage everybody, if you see something, please call it in. They have, they have, video recording is so crucial now. It is amazing what our technology at our PD allows us to do to locate the suspects. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other new business? I just want to add one more thing. I thank you, and I'm very proud of you guys for coming through to a unanimous decision on the unfinished business tonight. That was a hard thing. We debated it very in depthly, and I thank you all for everything you did tonight, because that was, that was a very hard issue for all of us. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, any, I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Just remember, we will only have one meeting in July. That is the fourth Monday of the month, which I believe is the 28th.